Because my father came to Los Angeles during the Watts riots. And at the height of civil unrest, he still felt safer to be here in the city of L.A. than to be back home. He came from the Midwest at a time when interracial marriage was socially unacceptable. So he came to Los Angeles because it was essentially life or death. Same for my mother and my grandmother, they also migrated here. I think about the time not long ago when my grandmother was not able to be served at a lunch counter, to now in her 94 years of life, to see the progression that we've made as a culture from President Obama's election to now our first African-American black woman to serve as mayor of Los Angeles. You know, I'm just really proud that she's able to see this moment in her lifetime. And I think that was the reason why I got into public service, to fight bigotry and to strive for equity so that no one else has to suffer the way that she did in her
Stick around to find out about some of the free events celebrating African American Heritage Month that you can attend in L.A. Angelinos now have the chance to learn about African Americans who broke glass ceilings and held some of the most powerful government positions. From former President Barack Obama to our current mayor Karen Bass, visitors of the At Your Service: A Legacy of First exhibit will get a closer look at our country's history
This is our African American Heritage Month Legacy Exhibit. And what it's showing here is the contributions that African Americans have made to the city of Los Angeles and also to the country. One of the most exciting exhibits are of our first black president, Barack Obama, and First Lady Michelle Obama. And we're really happy to have that part of the history shown here on the bridge in Los Angeles. In addition to that, we have Kamala Harris, who is our first woman vice president, and she's the first African-American/Asian vice president of the United States of America and my forever boss, someone I worked for in the United States Senate. And I'm really proud to have her featured here, as well as other members of the California State Senate, California Legislature. And so this is a place that people can come to, to just review our history and get excited about our future. Somebody said today, "This is Black History Month." No, it's Black Future Month. And you know, if you can see it, you can be it. And our children come to this space and understand some of the history that happened here. We have a part of the wall that says "The Legacy First," so you can see who broke that glass ceiling. And really, as you walk through this bridge, you might get some shards on your -- because there are a whole bunch of glass ceilings that got busted to get to this point. So we're excited about today, our first day of Black History Month, and we look forward to folks visiting and seeing what has happened here in Los Angeles.
When you're having a whale of a time, it means you're having a lot of fun. That's exactly what the attendees of the 2023 Cabrillo Marine Aquarium Whale Fiesta had. Families and their kids could learn about marine wildlife and preservation, collect pins, and sign up for a whale-watching boat trip. Check it out.
What we're enjoying is the Whale Fiesta. We've invited all the families in the area, everybody, to come on out and learn about the ocean, learn about the ocean environment, learn about whales and other mammals, and particularly ocean sustainability.
We've been celebrating Whale Fiesta for over 50 years. It's basically a celebration of getting people to actively engage with the cetaceans that we have right off the coast here in Southern California. So it's an introduction to all the different animals that they might be able to see if they go whale-watching on one of our whale-watch boats.
Southern California is one of the best places to see whales anywhere in the world. We have a variety of whale species that are visiting our coastline throughout the year. We traditionally were thought of as a place to see gray whales while they migrate along the coast during the winter and early spring. But the rest of the year, summer and fall, is a great time to see humpback whales, like the one behind me, as well as the largest whale in the world, the blue whale, which can be seen here feeding during the summer and fall months.
We have these opportunities on beautiful days like this to invite families out, and people are just happy and eager to be together and also to be in environments where we can learn about things like how we affect the ocean, how we can protect the ocean, to learn about the mammals and the animals all around us.
It's really what our staff and our facility was meant to do in engaging so many people. So it's just a joy for us to be able to have our exhibitors and all of our guests returning here to the aquarium, as well as returning out on our whale-watch boats. Visit us at cabrio-marineaquarium.org or cabriowailwatch.org, where you can find out specifically about becoming a volunteer with me. A member of the Los Angeles City Council since 2017, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez represents the residents of CD7. For 2023, she wants to make sure the line of communication with her constituents is seamless and that the needs of her community are well-served. With many goals and projects underway, she is hopeful about what lies ahead. Take a look.
My goals for 2023 are no different than the goals that I set when I took office in 2017. And that is to make sure that we have a high-functioning city government that is responsive to the needs of the 7th Council District and the citizens of Los Angeles. It's critically important that we make sure that our service delivery is impeccable and timely, to making sure that we're getting those critical infrastructure investments, particularly in districts like mine, where we have seen longstanding shortages of those types of critical investments. Making sure that we are doing everything that we need to do to create the very best environment for young families in my community and throughout the city of Los Angeles to enjoy the city. I'm very excited that this year, we have projects that we had begun planning in my first term now coming to fruition. And so we're going to see a great deal more investments in our local parks. We've got a dog park and a huge community park in somewhere that's about to be opening. We've got housing for veterans experiencing homelessness and families. So we see a lot of the projects that we had started incubating early in the last few years now coming to fruition, even with the COVID delays. So I'm very excited about some of the opportunities, the ribbon cuttings that we're going to be having in the 7th District. So in CD7, we are actually bringing in additional units of permanent supportive housing and interim housing solutions. Since taking office and through one of the most recent project Home Key locations, we are now at our 500th units of housing, with two more slated to come online. So we're continuing to make progress in this area. We've launched a very successful RV pilot to accelerate the disposition of RVs and getting individuals placed. And so I'm currently embarking on an effort to make that a citywide solution. And I look forward to continuing to deliver more of those successes and programmatic results, not just in the 7th District but across the city of Los Angeles. The Youth Ambassador Program is part of the comprehensive approach that we're taking to address homelessness. It's critical to recognize that the pipelines to homelessness can be derived in so many different ways, from individuals that are experiencing mental health to emancipated youth from the foster care system. And so making sure that we are addressing the needs of young people that are experiencing homelessness is critical, which is why I've worked with our Youth Development Department to come up with this Youth Ambassador Program. But thankfully, I'm really proud, was successful in securing federal dollars with the help of Congressman Adam Schiff to make this program a reality here in the city of Los Angeles. So I want to invite the public to always reach out to my office. We are here to serve. You can call my office at (213) 473-7007, or go to our website at monicarodriguez.org.
One of our country's most popular sports, baseball, didn't represent all Americans until recently. Through the Barriers Breakers Exhibit, visitors can learn about the stars of the Negro baseball leagues and the evolution of racial justice through the lens of this classic sport. Let's hear the story.
This exhibit is from the Negro League Baseball Museum in Kansas City, Missouri. It celebrates African-American players who participated in the Negro leagues because the opportunity from our major league baseball wasn't there for these players.
I'm a baseball fan. I grew up playing Negro League baseball in the city. I was in two leagues, one at Harvard Park in the morning, and later in the afternoon, I went to Van Ness Park. These are not only black ballplayers, but they're brown ballplayers, players from Cuba, players from Mexico, from the Caribbean. They were discriminated against because of their color, merely because of their color, not because of their ability, not because of their skills. And so when they were able to break into the major leagues, I think it really demonstrated the importance of persistence, the importance of hard work, of working together, and of not giving up. And I think all of these players represent that.
What we have here is an amazing exhibit. What you see along the walls here is a part of our photo collection here at Central Library. The other component of the exhibit that we're really excited to feature is the QR codes that's located along the panels. There's interviews, they can engage, it's interactive. It's a really unique feature at the school, and all you need is a phone to do it. It's a part of our history, it's American history. It was a dark time in history. However, these players and that organization shined a light where it wasn't shown. Our young people need to know about this history. Adults who aren't familiar with this history should know about it. And having it here at the library is a wonderful opportunity.
We hope that our young people will come out to not just see the exhibit, but come to the library. You know, this is an extraordinary resource in our community. I remember growing up in the Normandy-Vernon area, I went to Vermont Square, that was my library.
I come from a historically black college, and our motto is "I'll find a way or make one." These players and this organization exemplifies that. This exhibit is absolutely free, is here at Central Library downtown. We're open seven days a week. The public is welcome to join us and check it out. It was a magnificent exhibit that highlights the triumphs, the perseverance, and the sheer talent of these players.
The city of Los Angeles continues their celebration of African American Heritage Month with a special live event featuring renowned activist artist Betty Sarr at the Pico House in El Pueblo. The evening will include a screening of a new documentary on Sarr, Ready to Be a Warrior, and a Q &amp; A with the artist afterward. Still creating well into her 90s, Sarr is known for her contributions to the Black Arts Movement in the 1970s, taking on myths and stereotypes about race and femininity. Her work challenges ideas of African Americans with artwork that confronts American racism. See Betty Sarr: Ready to Be a Warrior at the historic Pico House, February 16th at 6:00 p.m. Admission is free, however, an RSVP is required. Call (323) 871-5801 to reserve your seat or log on to laevent RSVP.com. The Northridge Branch Library invites kids to write your own little golden biography book. Join Bite-Sized Histories as author Cherie L. Smith gives you her tips for writing nonfiction for young readers. Smith is an award-winning author of titles like What is the Civil Rights Movement? and Who Were the Tuskegee Airmen? She'll help you turn your own tales into a little golden book-style bite-sized history of your own. Come with a tale-to-tale and a willingness to write, draw, and have some fun learning. Bite-Sized Histories with Cherie L. Smith happens at the Northridge Branch Library Saturday, February 18th at 1:00 p.m. For details, visit lapl.org/events. Don't miss the Sixth Annual Black History Month Festival at the newly renovated Michelle and Barack Obama Sports Complex. Open Arms Food Pantry and Resource Center is proud to host this year's event, which will focus on health and wellness. Guest speakers will talk in depth on topics that affect the mind and body within the African-American community. All in attendance will find plenty of resources available to improve individual lifestyle, with a special focus on increasing literature in the community. And of course, there'll be plenty of shopping, food, and entertainment. The Sixth Annual L.A. Black History Month Festival happens from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sunday, February 19th. For more information, log on to culturela.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bobao, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and we're also on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Good morning, everyone. Like to call this meeting to order, please. Good morning and welcome to this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. I'm Paul Krikorian, President of the City Council, and we're ready to begin. As permitted under Assembly Bill 361, public comment will be taken today via teleconference as well as here in the council chambers. So with that, we are ready to begin today's meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Blumenfield, De Leon, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslavski, 11 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the February 10, 2023 minutes?
Thank you. Councilmember Jaroslavski moves, and Councilmember Ramon seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris Dawson moves, and Councilmember Lee seconds. Next?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday. It's time for the flag salute.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Hutt, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
I'd love to, President Krikorian. Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can we run through the agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Items 1 through 8 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 9 through 22 are items which public hearings have been held. Items 23 through 30 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Very good. Without objection, members, those items are now before us. Do members have any items that they would like to call special? Councilmember McCosker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we call item 9 special and item 15 special? We have amendments that the city attorney can read into the record.
Very good. Mr. City Attorney, could you please do so?
Yes, Mr. President. So for item number 9, the instruction number 2 is amended as follows. I further move that L.A. DOT report within 60 days on the impact of suspending the Scoff law program as it relates to parking violations and debt owed to the city, as well as, and following, existing parking ticket payment plans and outreach efforts to promote them, any available anonymized data on the socioeconomic demographics of those identified as Scoff laws, total number of Scoff law tickets currently outstanding by violation type, and the total amount owed to the city per violation type, total amount of money spent on towing and booting for Scoff law vehicles each of the past four fiscal years, and total amount of revenue collected from parking tickets from Scoff law vehicles following a tow or boot each of the past four fiscal years. And do we have a second for that? Is it?
Mr. Lee, seconds?
Mr. Lee, seconds. Thank you. And now I have number 15, which provides that for item 15 on today's agenda, it'd be amended to adopt the attached revised resolution, and I will read the revised part of the moving clauses. Now, therefore, the Los Angeles City Council resolves that, 1. Effective immediately, the LBFO's mandatory testing requirements for unvaccinated city employees as modified by the EERC in February and May 2022 will no longer be in effect. 2. The LBFO's modified mandatory testing requirements for unvaccinated city employees may be reassessed and reinstituted at a later time as the COVID-19 situation evolves in accordance with guidance issued by the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunities Commission, with the city employee organizations and employees notified in advance of any changes with an opportunity to meet and confer on effects. And finally, 3. Any and all city employees who incurred costs related to the LFBO's mandatory testing requirements shall be reimbursed for such costs. Effective immediately, no city employee shall be charged for the cost of any required testing. Presented by Mr. McCosker. And the second is?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else? Mr. McCosker. Okay. Councilmember Lee?
Item number 22 for comments and agenda and amendment that's being circulated.
Does the city attorney have that amendment yet?
I do not. And which item was being amended, Mr. Lee?
Item number 22.
22? Thank you. I don't have it yet, but when it's circulated, I will read it out.
Okay. Is that, and we'll need to determine whether that's a substantive amendment that should be read in before public comment or not. Okay, so the city attorney will see it when it comes around. Mr. Blumenfield?
Yes, thank you. Item 28, just to call special in order, just to note and file it, we were able to get it done without this motion, so. To file note, note and file 28.
Is there a second to the motion to note and file?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker.
Thank you. Do we need to hold that for a vote, or can we do that without objection?
That item is open for public comment, so that would be done later, sir.
Very good. Any other items to be called special, members? Okay, I see none. Going once, going twice. Very good. Then, Madam Clerk, what matters are now before us that can be voted upon?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items 10 through 14 and 16 through 21, sir.
Okay, on those items, members, if there's no objection, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes. Mr. President, may I? The ordinance for item number 10 is held over to February 21st, 2023, unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Very good. Can we go ahead and proceed to public comment, or do we have that amendment?
Sorry, sir. Yes, you can proceed to public comment. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star 6 to unmute. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star 6 to unmute.
Members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total. And if you wish one minute for general public comment, please speak to the items before beginning general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you need to be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to get immediately clearly on topic. If you don't, or you again stray off-topic, you will forfeit your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. The items that are open for public comment are items 1 through 9, 15, and 22 through 30. So that's 1 through 9, 15, and 22 through 30. For members of the public calling to, calling in to speak, as you were told, an automated Zoom voice will prompt you to press star 6 to unmute yourself. If you don't do so, council staff will prompt you once more, typically by reading off the last four digits of your phone number. At that point, you really need to press star 6 right away, or we'll move on to the next speaker. Also, there is a brief time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, so two things. First, when it's your turn to speak, please turn down the volume on any other devices you're listening to, Channel 35 or YouTube. Because of the time delay and feedback, it really creates a huge amount of confusion if you're listening on another device. Second, please keep one ear to the phone. We want you to hear in real time when it's your turn to press star 6 to unmute yourself. If you're only listening on another device, you may not hear soon enough, and unfortunately, you may get passed over. And with that, Mr. President, we are ready to begin public comment.
Thank you very much. We have quite a number of people wishing to provide public comment, so we're going to try to proceed as expeditiously as we can, both here in the chambers and on the phone. So I'm going to call out a number of names. If you hear your name called, please come to the aisle on your left, my right, and be prepared to speak when you come forward. So I'm going to call Pearl Pantoja, Mike McMahon, Nate Helton, and Jennifer Kennedy, please.
Hi. Which items had you signed up for?
Item 15 and public comment.
And then you have a minute for each. Please begin.
Good morning, everyone. I'm just here, I'm wanting to speak up for city employees with regards to testing. COVID is going to be a lifelong thing. It's not going to go away. Testing is a waste of money at this point. It was just discussed in the Personnel Commission meeting that $275,000 are going each month to testing employees that have no symptoms. So this is fraud, waste, and abuse at its finest. We need to end the testing. Along with that, the mandate itself, the ordinance, it needs to go away. It's basically putting a target on those employees that have religious beliefs, and it's forcing them, or it's forcing us to pick between our drives, our livelihood, our family, and our health. This needs to come to an end. Not only am I asking for the testing to end, but please consider ending the ordinance as a whole. We need your help. This needs to come to an end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike McMahon, Nate Helton, Jennifer Kennedy, and Bonnie Wallace, please.
Hi. Which items had you signed up for?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Agenda item 15 and general public comment, please.
You have a minute for each. Please begin.
Good morning. My name is Michael McMahon. I'm the co-founder of Roll Call for Freedom. We are an anti-mandate coalition of city employees. We're not anti-vaccine, we're anti-mandate. We demand that ordinance 187-134 be lifted immediately. The intended state, the stated intent of the ordinance was to stop the transmission of SARS-CoV-2. But as we have seen from Pfizer's own released documents and the admissions of their own executives, the shots were never tested for stopping transmission. Even the CDC Director Rochelle Walensky acknowledged on ABC that the shots did not stop transmission of SARS-CoV-2. It is now accepted worldwide that one person's shot does not protect another person. These facts alone should have stopped the city's mandate long ago. The city council's hanging on to power, which is power only granted under emergency authorization, has disproportionately affected workers of all races, religions, and medical conditions. This council's ordinance is hurting people, not helping. Terminated employees have now been without pay or benefits for a year and a half. Our kids don't have medical benefits because of this ordinance. City employees just want the opportunity to work without a carrot and a stick and to maintain our sovereign, natural rights imbued upon us by God. Ladies and gentlemen, emergency use authorization law states that an EUA product cannot be mandated. That's under 21 U.S.C. 50. Cities such as New York, San Diego, and even most recently Seattle have ended their mandates. It is time that Los Angeles does the same. Bring back the good, hard-working employees, the men and women who stood against coercion and held fast to their civil rights. This so-called emergency is over. Stop the mandate immediately and reinstate all terminated employees, especially those who were wrongfully fired for refusing to allow the illegal deduction of pay for illegal testing practices, which the court found illegal under California Labor Code Section 2802 on July 13th of last year. It is time to return every worker with full-back pay for all-time miss. And, Mr. City Attorney, end the no-bid testing contract with Bluestone.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, Nate Helton, Jennifer Kennedy, Bonnie Wallace, Yvette Smith, and David Bolog, please.
And, Mr. President, as the other speakers are coming up, I have the amending motion on item 22, if I may read it.
Okay, if you could just hold on one minute, sir. Go right ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
So this provides that item 22 on today's agenda be amended to adopt the following revised subsection recommendation D, which would delete the last phrase, and I'll read out what's left over when the phrase is deleted. So D, options for enforcement strategies to ensure compliance, including but not limited to an administrative enforcement program, a 60-day cure period similar to the provision of the tenant anti-harassment ordinance, a fine schedule, a private right of action for tenants against their landlords for overcharging and violations of the ordinance. So what is deleted is the phrase. And mechanisms to ensure that landlords will be responsible for the actions of contracted third-party billing agencies that violate the ordinance, presented by Mr. Lee and seconded by Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you.
So thank you for your patience, Speaker. Which items had you signed up for?
Good morning, and thank you for having me. I'm signed up for agenda item 15 and a general public comment.
You have a minute for both? And yes, thank you for?
Thank you very much. Good morning. I am Nathan Helton, a fireman already terminated due to vaccine mandates. I will be commenting on item 15, Part 2, regarding reinstatement of testing unvaccinated employees in the future. The city of L.A. continues to engage in disparate treatment by discriminating against the unvaccinated, causing them to do testing now or in the future, but not testing the vaccinated. Ordinance 187-134 requires the unvaccinated, or the unvaccinated to be masked, take vaccine training courses, be denied promotions and transfers while the vaccinated are not. Many have been suspended without pay and even fired, as I was. It has been proven over and over and over that the fully vaccinated boosted still catch and spread COVID-19, which means they are not safer or less contagious than the unvaccinated. So why are they not being tested also? The city's goal of fully vaccinated workforce is a wrong goal because these experimental genetic-modifying so-called vaccines are proven to be unsafe and ineffective, causing blood clots, cardiac arrhythmias. I'm going to move on to my general public comment.
Yes, please.
The entire ordinance is fundamentally flawed, not only because the discrimination and disparate treatment authorizes, but because the reason listed in the urgency clause states that the vaccination is the most effective way to prevent transmission and limit COVID-19 hospitalization and death. Again, this has been proven wrong. Vaccinations have not prevented transmission, hospitalizations, or deaths, any more than one's own God-given immune system. They in fact damage one's immune system. People died from COVID-19 because they weren't treated and because real treatments were being suppressed. These dedicated patriotic employees who worked tirelessly and fearlessly throughout the pandemic, who are now treated as criminals and outcasts, need to be reinstated and made whole again. This is unexcusable, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Kennedy, Bonnie Wallace, Yvette Smith, David Bolog, and Joey Juarez, please.
Hi. Which items had you signed up for?
Hi, good morning. Item 15 and general public comment.
Sure, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. It's Jennifer Kennedy, and this is your two minutes of liberty. Did you hear it in the pledge? Did you hear those words? And "to the republic for which it stands." Our republic was founded on freedom, on personal liberty. And every day that this council maintains the charade of COVID protocols and maintains the threat of reinstituting COVID protocols like testing, et cetera, every day you violate that pledge. The namesakes of our nation that honor our schools and institutions, Washington, Jefferson, Madison, Hamilton, they would be spinning in their graves to know what you have done to your own people. Our founding fathers stood for liberty above all, and I ask this council, what do you stand for? Or pointedly, what did you fall for? We know that the COVID protocols and the vaccine itself were rolled out on pseudoscience, fraud, outright lies. We know that the world admits now that the shots do nothing to protect anybody else, and they don't prevent infection or transmission. Every infringement on personal liberty must be justified, and the continued COVID protocols and the continued vax requirements in the existing ordinance cannot stand another day. Your ordinance states that it's to protect the peace, health, and safety of employees and of the public. All of that is done. We know it doesn't protect health and safety. Safety? You fired veteran police and fire officers and firefighters. You fired them, and now no one qualified wants to work for this city. And peace? You disrupted the peace of your own employees. You took food off their tables. You took medical care away from their children, and that continues to this day? And that's what any new city employee has to look at in the future. You cannot continue these protocols, and the vaccine mandate must come down. Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Price, Ms. Hernandez, what will you be known for? What will your legacy be? Tyranny or freedom? Tear this mandate down. Thank you.
Thank you. And please don't shout out in the council chambers. What is your name again, ma'am? I'm sorry? What was your name? Thank you. All right, Bonnie Wallace, Yvette Smith, David Bolog, Joey Juarez, please.
Hi, Ms. Wallace. Which items had you signed up for?
Item 15, general comment.
You have a minute for each.
Okay, I second everything that she just said and the few people that spoke before me. The COVID restrictions have been completely unconstitutional and illegal. And now, as we all know, the shots don't work, masking itself doesn't work, and frankly, the testing doesn't work. To have to get tested for something that you don't know you have, if you do not feel sick and you can feel completely healthy and still have to get tested for it, there's something completely wrong. and still have to get tested for it, there's something completely wrong with that. We have had our individual rights violated in the city of Los Angeles and in America, and it does need to stop. I really don't have anything else to say because they all said it for me, but please, as the Los Angeles City Council, you represent one of the biggest cities in our country. It is time to tear down these mandates, institute freedom and individual rights, and you all could be a part of that for one of the largest cities in our country and show as a shining example. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yvette Smith, David Bolag, Joey Juarez, Ian Jamison, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Agenda item fifteen and general public comment.
Please go ahead.
Good morning. I ask that you vote to discontinue COVID-19 surveillance testing. I have been an animal control officer for 30 years. I have worked as an animal control officer for the city of L.A. for the last 17 years, five of those with the Animal Cruelty Task Force in partnership with the Los Angeles Police Department. I chose not to get the COVID-19 vaccine because that is my choice. My employer does not have a say in my medical decisions. I have been testing since October 2021. I have endured this weekly testing while I worked through the pandemic. Animal welfare is my passion. And I was forced to test in order to keep this job that I love. The city has lost good employees, will continue to lose good employees, and will discourage good candidates from applying. Please end these vaccine mandates and testing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, was your name Yvette Smith? Thank you. David Bolag, Joey Juarez, Ian Jamison, Claudio Bovell, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
I will be speaking on Agenda item 15 and public comment, and they will mesh together.
A minute for each, please go ahead.
Thank you. The AFL-CIO pushed vaccine mandate will be looked back at as the same horror as the mistake, as the displacement of West Coast Japanese during World War II and the Tuskegee Experiment. It is important that this historic atrocity not go without the justice it deserves. In order to serve that justice, the reason for it must be understood. It is easy to say, "That is all that we had to work with, and the Center for Disease Control recommended it." But who in the CDC recommended this? Do you know? I strongly doubt it. It was the ACIP. Do you even know what that stands for? It is the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices. Did you bother to look at who these 14 people are, their background, and their business interest? As a group, they've never met a vaccine that they didn't want to suggest. It is their business model. All they needed was the studies to recommend it, to back it up, in the phases that they did it. I see that you are now starting to follow the law. Unfortunately, it took the Los Angeles Police protectively to sue you in order for you to do that. Now, you're going to be doing that on item three...
Sure, of course.
On number three of item 15? The justification that this vaccine mandate that has been decided that a government agent can mandate a shot because of the Jacobson versus Massachusetts ruling in the Supreme Court never applied to this because you never gave city employees the chance to pay a $5 fine to not participate. What you're doing with item 15 is two-thirds in the right direction. But to maintain this mandate is still saying that what you done was not wrong. It was wrong, and it must end. And to Kevin DeLeón, I just want to tell you, hang in there, buddy. The crowd out here loves you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Joey Juarez, Ian Jamison, Claudio Bovell, and just Ag.
Hi, Ms. Juarez. Which items had you signed up for?
Hi, I... General public comment and item 15.
Okay, you have a minute for each. Start with item 15, please.
Okay.
Floor's yours.
Oh, thanks. So... Excuse me. Please end this mandate. It's tyrannical, and the state has no... should have no say in our medical decisions. And, yeah, these employees should be reinstated with back pay, and they should get their jobs back. They should never be forced to undergo a medical procedure any... ever again, whether it's mass testing, shots. And these mandates go against everything we think we are in this country. Our fathers envisioned a country where for the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And like I said, like other people have mentioned, these good employees are being penalized and fired, and the mandates now... Oh, wait, oh yeah, general public comment, thanks.
You have another minute for general, please continue.
Thanks. I must say the viola... they... excuse me. The right to refuse or take or refuse a medical procedure is... The right to make our own medical decisions is fundamental to all rights, for all rights, and without the right to make our own medical decisions, all other rights are unsustainable. And with good... like other people mentioned, good employees are being fired, and when you're required... when you're mandated to take medical procedures, you're going to be left with... on the long run, you'll be left with just a bunch of order followers, which will, on the long run, have horrifying consequences. And the mandates now... And the mandates now encompass all fired employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. While Mr. Juarez was speaking, there was somebody who was kicking or pounding on one of the pews. Please don't do that. It's distracting, and it's disruptive of the meeting, and it's a basis for removal if it continues. Mr. Jamison, Claudio Bovell, Ag, Magnus Sabodo, and Arnold Sacks, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Agenda item 15 and general public comment.
Please go ahead. Floor's yours.
I was run over by the truth one day. Ever since the accident, I've walked this way. So stick my legs in plaster, tell me lies about COVID-19. Heard the alarm clock screaming with pain, couldn't find myself, so I went back to sleep again. So fill my ears with silver, stick my legs in plaster, tell me lies about COVID-19. Every time I shut my eyes, all I see is flames. Made a marble phone book, and I carved all the names. So coat my eyes with butter, fill my ears with silver, stick my legs in plaster, tell me lies about COVID-19. I smell something burning. Hope it's just my brains. They're only dropping peppermints and daisy chains. So stuff my nose with garlic, coat my eyes with butter, fill my ears with silver, stick my legs in plaster, tell me lies about COVID-19. Where were you at the time of the crime? Down at the cenotaph drinking slime? So chain my tongue with whiskey, stuck my nose with garlic, coat my eyes with butter, fill my ears with silver, stick my legs in plaster, tell me lies about COVID-19. You put your bombers in, you put your conscience out, you take the human being, and you twist it all about. So scrub my skin with women, chain my tongue with whiskey, stuff my nose with garlic, coat my eyes with butter, fill my ears with silver, stick my legs in plaster, tell me lies about COVID-19. That was a reworking of Adrian Mitchell's Tell Me Lies About Vietnam, 1964. We know history, and therefore we know that governments lie, we know multinational corporations lie, and we know that everything about this so-called emergency has been based on lies. End the fucking mandate and rehire all terminated employees with back pay.
Thank you. Claudio Bovell, Ag, Magnus Sabodo, Arnold Sacks, and Daniel Jimenez, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Just regular oral communication.
Excuse me?
Just public...
Oh, general public comment.
Yeah, general public.
You have a minute.
And sir, can you give me your name too, please, sir?
My name is Claudio... Claudio Bovell.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, City Attorney, Housing Department. The reason I'm here because Glory Homes Apartment Complex needs to be identified as far as investigation. Right now, it's a situation that's capital improvement, unhealthy living conditions, unhealthy safety conditions in regards to the tenants that live in the apartment complex, illegal activity in regards to forcing the tenants to pay rent online, which is totally illegal. So I have documentation to give to my council lady and to the president of the union, a president of the council, so you can see exactly what's going on. And before I end this conversation, Jack Robinson Stadium, the problem will continue for the residents disabled. No wheelchair ramps, potholes on the track, and I'm trying to prevent a lawsuit, but it's coming, just a matter of time. So I want to share information with the president of the council, information with my council lady, and also the laws of protection, of tenant protection. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the sergeants can take the material you have, and also, sir, where is the apartment building located?
It's on the documentation, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, I have someone who just signed AG. Oh, I see. It's AG, okay. Followed by Magnus Sabodo, Arnold Sacks, Daniel Jimenez, and Nomi Gomez, please.
Hi, Mr. Gartner. Which items had you signed up?
Someone finally told you how to say initials. All right, one minute of general public comment.
Sure, please go ahead.
All right, so it's time to put the public back in public comment, since we've been hearing from all kinds of city employees who you snuck in at some point beforehand to sign up ahead of us, ahead of the general public. Yeah, so fuck KDL. You still need to resign. You're all racist. There's a whole culture of racism. Paul, when you say that it's a small group, you're saying the exact same kind of language that was said on the recording. So you might as well resign too. I think we're getting to that point. Fable, you're not assistant council president, so shut up. Yeah, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Magnus Sabodo, Arnold Sacks, Daniel Jimenez, Nomi Gomez, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
General comment.
Sure, please go ahead.
This is a letter to Kevin DeLeón, whose coward ass has walked out. You said that CD14 needs you in order to heal, and that is such an abuser mentality. You are no better than a textbook, run-of-the-mill abuser. And we've known that you were an abuser long before you were caught. The audio recording wasn't a surprise to so many of us, and that's because not only have you consistently proclaimed your racist ideologies, both recorded and not recorded, but you've enacted and supported bigoted policies and actions consistently throughout your career. I watched you vote to criminalize poverty, to take even more money from our schools and give them to the most murderous police force in the country. You guys electrocuted a man a couple of weeks ago. Nice. Fuck you guys. You are a criminal, Kevin DeLeón. You have gerrymandered our districts and hurt working-class people. There is... I know that you think that you are the victim here, but you are nothing more than a narcissist. It is actually unbelievable that you're still on this council. I hope every single day that you are on this council, you do not rest and you see...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, what is your name, please? Magnus Sabodo, Arnold Sacks, Daniel Jimenez, Nomi Gomez, and Jessica Panduro, please.
Hi, Mr. Sacks. Which items had you signed up for?
Oh, I signed up for all the public hearings. I signed up for the items that are open for public hearing, Mr. City Attorney. Do you have the paperwork in front of you?
So you have three minutes for items one through nine.
Oh, that's great.
Fifteen and twenty-three through thirty. Please go ahead.
They're all public hearings. They're all noticed for public hearings. So why are they not excluded from the agenda? Why aren't you giving extra time to people to speak about items that refer to lighting districts that are noticed for public hearings? Public hearings mean they're open for the public to have their say. People don't get a chance to speak about lighting districts. Does a city send out notification to the people in those lighting districts to let them know that that's up for their opinion? No, they don't. They don't send anything out. And people don't necessarily check, so they're actually getting cheated. It's a non-doable process. You have some items referring to the homeless. The city's homeless... So I'm reading from the Board of Supervisors Agenda that in 2017, it was about homeless. Now it's homeless, 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 homelessness. When did homelessness become an issue? It's always been homeless. You had an opportunity to send up fifty...
I'm confused about which item you're on, Mr. Sacks.
Mr. City Attorney, stop cutting me off. It's on the agenda, you dumb motherfucker!
No, that's not the way it's going to work. You're either going to go to general public comment, or you're going to sit down.
The last five items are about homeless.
Okay, I don't understand...
You'll follow the instructions with the city attorney, Mr. Sacks.
So let's send you to general because you seem to dart when you have something on your chin.
I'm not finished with my three minutes.
You'll have one minute. You'll have one minute. Go ahead and take it.
Oh, fuck you, Paul Krikorian. How's your son doing after the Antifa? Does your son still have that restaurant with his daughter-in-law? How did that work out? Why we got here? The Affordable Care Act may require most people to have minimum insurance. That was signed by President Barack Obama. That's a federal law. When a president signs an act into law, it's a federal law. It's not just a city law. You had 15,000 people signed up. That was $360 million that motherfuckers stole. And nobody cared, but it was all about L.A. care. It was always about L.A. care. You got this shitty-ass COVID-19 bullshit. You're tracking coronavirus, but you're talking about COVID. I don't see a lot of people...
Thank you, Mr. Sacks.
Magnus Sabodo, Daniel Jimenez... Your time has expired. Have a seat. Magnus Sabodo, Daniel Jimenez, Nomi Gomez, Jessica Panduro, and Elba Cuevas Varelas, please.
Hi. So just so we can keep track, which name had you signed up under and which items had you signed up for?
I signed up for general public comment.
Okay, and under what name, so we can...
Daniel Jimenez.
Okay, thank you. So you have a minute. Please go ahead.
Hello, good morning, council. My name is Daniel Jimenez, and I'm the Director of Community Organizing Within a City Struggle and a member of the Keep LA House Coalition. I am here today to support the right to counsel for tenants. Thousands of tenants are still being impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, and with emergency protections expiring at the end of March, which is something y'all didn't do, there is a great risk that the predatory landlords will try to evict those that are most vulnerable. The right to legal representation is key in maintaining people housed and keeping people away from homelessness. A strong tenant protection's work to keep people away from homelessness. In addition, I am here to demand the resignation of Kevin DeLeón as a council member. You're an accomplice to Nuri Martinez and Gil Cedillo. Your actions speak for themselves. You don't care about the community, and you're a racist, homophobic, and only look out for yourself. Most importantly, you were conspiring to dilute the power of Black voters and tenants, replacing... replicating the same system of oppression that white supremacy has used against our communities of color to divide and segregate.
Thank you.
Te deberia dar vergüenza.
Thank you.
Thank you. Magnus Sabodo, Nomi Gomez, Jessica Panduro, Elba Cuevas Varelas, and Sofia Mendoza, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for? Good morning. I'm doing general comment. My name is Nomi Gomez. Good morning, committee members. Affordable and adequate housing should be the agenda of every public servant. Given the conditions of the housing crisis in Los Angeles, the rampant illegal evictions, the culture of gentrification, the economic downturn from the pandemic, the right to counsel must now become a protected tenant right. Tenants who have counsel are more likely to remain housed. Tenants who have counsel are more likely to stay employed. Tenants who have counsel are more likely to overcome the overwhelming health burdens manifested by landlord abuse. I urge all of you to help pass the right to counsel ordinance and give tenants the right to counsel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez, and I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. All right, Magnus Sabodo, Jessica Panduro, Elba Cuevas Varelas, Sofia Mendoza, and Domingo Solozano, please.
Hello.
Hi, good morning. My name is Elba...
Had you signed up for an item or just general?
Yes, public...
General?
Yes.
Please go ahead. You have a minute.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Elba Cuevas Varelas, and I would like to get the attention of everybody, please. It's very disrespectful that you're talking to each other. My AKA is the $3 million woman. Why? Because I'm being sued by my landlord for $3 million for something that's... It's very... I just don't have any words. I'm here for a right to counsel. This is my summons for court for March. I haven't got nobody yet to represent me, and for $3 million, it's very... it's not good. I've been here before. I talked about my story before. I'm here to support the tenants that need a right to counsel. I'm here to support the tenants that need a right to counsel too. The ordinance needs to be passed. And like I said, it's, it's bad, you know? Hearing $3 million is not good for something that's... This landlord is, he just came in as a landlord, a brand-new-
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Jessica Panduro, Sofia Mendoza, Dominga Solorsano, and Hassan Zuniga, please.
Hi, so which name had you signed up under and what would you like to speak on?
Good morning, Jessica Panduro, general public comment.
Very good. You have a minute. Please begin.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Jessica Panduro. I'm a community organizer with Inner City Struggle and a long-term resident of Boyle Heights. I want to strongly urge you to support the right to counsel ordinance. No one should ever be evicted without legal representation, and our tenants are the most vulnerable, so give them a fighting chance at court by giving them legal representation. And again, I am here talking to you, Kevin De Leon. We're asking for your resignation. As a CD 14 resident, you do not represent us. Your, your actions speak louder where you did not stand up. You did not represent me instead of being out there supporting our black community, our indigenous community, our LGBTQIA. You failed us. You have continued failing us by sitting in that seat thinking that everything could go back to normal. Eres un sinvergüenza, eres un racista, y no te queremos. Fuera, Kevin. Fuera!
Thank you.
Thank you. Sofia Mendoza, Dominga Solorsano, Hassan Zuniga, and it's either Ivan or Iván Machado, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Buenos días.
Good morning.
Eh, mi nombre es Sofia Mendoza, y necesito traducción.
My name is Sofia Mendoza, and I need an interpreter. Aquí estoy, señor. Hable, por favor, en pausas.
Okay. Ah, mi nombre es Sofia Mendoza de nuevo, soy miembro de ACE, y vivo en el distrito nueve.
My name is Sofia Mendoza. Again, I'm a member, and I live in District Nine.
Estoy aquí para apoyar la moción de Nitia Rama.
I'm here to support the motion, Nitia Rama.
Todos tenemos derecho a un abogado.
We all have the right to an attorney.
Cuando estamos siendo desalojados.
When we are being evicted.
Eh, los criminales tienen derecho a un abogado.
The criminals have the right to an attorney.
¿Por qué los inquilinos no?
Why don't the tenants have one?
Sí, también nosotros pagamos impuesto y estamos pagando la renta cada mes.
We also pay taxes, and we're paying a rent every month.
Y, y queremos que apoyen esa emoción, por favor, a todos los concejales.
We want you to support all the council members.
Especialmente a mi concejal, sí, del distrito nueve.
All the council members, especially my member in District Nine.
Por favor, espérese. Necesitamos traducir.
Gracias.
Especially my councilman in District Nine.
Thank you.
Okay, Dominga Solorsano, Hassan Zuniga, Ivan or Iván, Iván Machado, and Georgina Serano, please.
Hello.
Buenos días.
Good morning.
Ah, mi nombre es Dominga Solorsano.
My name is Dominga Solorsano.
Y soy miembro de ACE, del distrito nueve.
I'm an ACE member, and from District Nine.
Ah, y vengo aquí, por favor, a pedirle a todos los concejales que, si, por favor-
I'm here to ask all the council members to please-
Ah, nos apoyen con tener un, una, un derecho a un abogado, nosotros los inquilinos.
Back us up for the right of an attorney for us tenants.
Y como personas de bajos recursos y, y personas trabajadoras y honestas, se los pedimos, por favor, que no nos olviden.
As a person of low income and hard-working people, we want you not to forget us because we do pay taxes.
Por favor, por favor. Hable con pausas para que la traductura le puede traducir.
Y, y como personas honestas, queremos, por favor, que nos escuchen, que no hay-
As honest persons, we want you to please listen to us.
Si hay personas que no son honestas y tienen derecho a un abogado, ¿por qué nosotros, personas y creciendo hijos, por qué no tenemos un derecho?
If there are persons who are not honest and they do have the right to an attorney, why don't we have the right to an attorney? We are honest people and we have kids.
Sí, por favor, se, se le pide, ah, la señorita Nitia Ramos, se le, se le apoya y se le pide también, por favor.
So we're asking Ms. Nitia Rama to please-
Por inquilinos que tengamos un derecho a un abogado. Gracias.
For the tenants to have a right to an attorney. Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you. Hassan Zuniga, Ivan Machado, Georgina Serano, and Barbara Schultz.
So, Ms. Dumont, please stop shouting. I, I don't care who you're talking to. We're trying to listen to the people who have come to this council to have a comment. This is your first, last, and only warning. Please be quiet. Which items, Speaker, would you like to speak on?
General comment.
Very good. You have a minute. Please begin.
My name is Georgina Serano, supporting the Coalition Right to Counsel. Thank you, Kevin, for supporting the community all these years. I love you be here. So as a community organizer, I listen all the time the people crying and suffer for be evicted. Eviction is devastating for families, is stressful, and really, so many times unfair. So as a community organizer, I ask for your support to help me to continue educate the people, and the people can defend themselves because it's not a way to have enough attorneys to represent in the court. So thank you for support, right to counsel, and thank you for listening to the community.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Hassan Zuniga, Ivan Machado, or Iván Machado, Barbara Schultz, Dr. D.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
I'm going to do public comment.
Sure, please go ahead.
Hello, y'all. My name is Hassan. I'm an organizer with ACE, Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. We have spoken to a marquise in the area where I organize. We got the support of his office and his colleagues to make sure that right to counsel gets done at the Housing Committee when it gets introduced by Nitia Rama. Now I'm asking you, Cocorian, I'm asking the rest of them, Park, Price, and Lee, even Lee. I'm asking you, Kevin De Leon, anybody that is in this horseshoe, to support right to counsel. Stay House is just a program, and it's not even covering the millions of people that are falling in the cracks at this point. I can tell you as an organizer that I continue to speak to people as they come in to me, knowing that I can only organize around the issue and not give them representation of a legal lawyer to be able to fight an eviction and knowing that they're gonna be evicted, or they're gonna only be able to, long-term, the situation of being evicted is heartbreaking. Every day, I'm listening to their stories, so I'm asking you to support right to counsel.
Thank you. Ivan or Iván Machado, Barbara Schultz, Dr. D, Rodolfo Martinez, and Angelina Jimenez.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Iván Machado, and I'm speaking on general comment, if I may. I'm supporting the right to counsel because as a, as a community activist in MacArthur Park and in CD 13 and First CD, Councilmember Unises, I've noticed that valentino, no, nonprofits like Inquilinos Unidos and also Cela, helping undocumented families fill out the answers, the summonses throughout the pandemic has been a challenge because a lot of those families have United States citizens' childrens that cannot be displaced, and that's why we need people like Eviction Defense Network, Elena Pup. They don't have the staff, and we need right to counsel so that these families can be housed. So I'm begging you, as a girl scout, as a community activist, as a single parent that has her kid in the University of Seattle, to help these people and these families. If, and please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Schultz, Dr. D, Rodolfo Martinez, Angelina Jimenez, and Sergio Vargas, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
General comment.
Very good. You have a minute. Please begin.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Schultz. I'm an attorney with Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles, and I oversee Stay Housed LA. Happy Valentine's Day, and it is time to show the love to tenants by passing a right to counsel ordinance. We all know that tenants do a lot better when they have attorneys to represent them. With Stay Housed, over 50% of tenants we represent stay in place in their homes, and about another 40% get what we call a soft landing, meaning they have enough time to move out, perhaps some money in terms of waived rent or even relocation, so that they don't end up homeless. So please pass a right to counsel. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. D, Rodolfo Martinez, Angelina Jimenez, Sergio Vargas, please.
Hi, Ms. Dumont. Which items did you want to speak on?
You don't get to call me that.
O, o, okay. How would you like me to call you?
Doctor.
Excuse me?
Doctor.
Dr. Dumont, which items would you like to speak on?
Public comment.
Please go ahead.
You people are disgusting. Absolutely disgusting. You don't listen to people who are really suffering. And then you let these people, who are city employees, jump the line. They weren't even here to sign up. All these other people were here to sign up. Okay, so if you don't hear every single one of them-
Hold your time for a minute. There will be no shouting out when a member of the public is trying to speak to this council, or you'll be removed. Do not interrupt her public testimony, please. Go right ahead.
If you don't listen to all of these people, you're going to hear again from me. And I want Kevin De Leon out of this room. He is one of the worst people on this planet, and you have accepted him in this forum. I also want Tracy Park to take responsibility for the mess that she's created in my neighborhood and the people who are suffering there. But I want to give up the rest of my time to these people, and you hear all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rodolfo Martinez, Angelina Jimenez, Sergio Vargas, and Mirna Vargas, please.
Yep. Please. Okay. Hi, which-
Excuse me. Excuse me. Please have a seat and be silent in these chambers so that we can hear from the members of the public.
So, Speaker, which items did you want to speak on?
Necesito traducción.
Okay. Again.
Buenos días. Un saludo a todos porque hoy es un día muy especial.
Everybody, because today is a very special day.
Es el día del amor y la amistad.
It's the day of love and friendship.
De corazón les deseo que este día sea especial para ustedes.
From my heart, I wish this day be special for all of you.
Y abogo a ese corazón que tienen ustedes.
To see this heart that you all have.
Para ver si nuestros inquilinos-
To see for tenants.
Llegan a tener un abogado.
Come to have an attorney.
Estoy de acuerdo con lo que dijo la señora Sofía.
I agree with what, what Ms. Sofía said.
Que si las personas que van a ir a parar a la cárcel-
If the persons who go to jail-
Tienen derecho a un abogado.
If they have a right to an attorney-
Como criminales que son.
As criminals, which that's what they are.
Entonces, ¿por qué un inquilino no puede tener un abogado? Creo que ya es tiempo.
So then why a tenant cannot have an attorney? I think it's time.
De verdad de corazón se los pido a todos ustedes que pongan un poquito más de atención.
For real, from my heart, I'm asking all of you to please pay a little more attention.
Y perdón por darles más trabajo. Muchas gracias.
Pardon me for keeping you more work. Thank you very much.
Is your name? Señor, es su nombre? Okay.
Angelina Jimenez. Su nombre es Angelina Jimenez.
Thank you.
Okay, can you give the microphone to him? Please.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Rodolfo Martinez. Soy residente del distrito nueve, en la ciudad de Los Angeles.
In the city of Los Angeles.
Vengo para abogar porque se implemente un programa de asesoría legal.
I'm here to beg for a program of legal assistance to be implemented.
Es importante contar con un abogado.
It's important to have an attorney.
Para defender a los inquilinos.
To defend the tenants.
La vida está dura.
Life is hard.
Todo ha subido hasta los huevos.
Everything went up, even the eggs.
Como que si las gallinas pidieron aumento de salario.
As if the chickens asked for pay raise.
Entonces, no tenemos capacidad para pagar un abogado, una asesoría legal.
We're not capable of paying an attorney.
Esperemos que se pongan la mano en la conciencia.
Let's put, let's hope you put your hand in your conscience.
Y nos faciliten la vida porque está dura la vida.
And felicitate life, because life is hard.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you. Sergio Vargas, Mirna Vargas, Cassandra Aranda, and Lena Jones, please.
Hello.
Hi, this is Mirna Vargas.
Okay, can you pull the mic down?
I'm from District Eight.
One second. The microphone odds, easier to hear you. Okay. So you want to speak on general?
I'm going to talk right now, like this.
Okay.
Yes, please. This is Mirna Vargas. Thank you to everyone here in the City Hall. Happy Valentine's to each one of you. I love to be here with everyone. And I am here for, for justice, for helping each one of us as standard to have a lawyer, to help each one of us. I love this place to everybody here about us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sergio Vargas, Cassandra Aranda, Lena Jones, and Nancy Villanueva, please.
Which items did you want to speak on?
I, I'm just gonna make public comment today, general comment.
Sure, you have a minute. Flori.
All right, good morning, council members. My name is Cassandra Aranda. I am the founder of On Our Feet Collective. And I am here today to urge those of you who may be on the fence still to let you guys know right to counsel is just one of the many effective ways that we can circumvent this housing crisis spiraling more out of control than it is. When we're already providing public defenders to people who are gonna be facing impactful legal issues, we have to start to identify that eviction summons is one of those impactful legal issues. If an eviction judgment stays on one's credit for seven years, how are we expecting people to find housing again if they are being evicted? They're, they have nowhere to go other than the sidewalk right now because, one, the rent doesn't match the median income here in the city, and they don't even know how to defend themselves when they're being in the summons. I believe the statistic was here. I did write it down on fancy stationery for you guys. It's all themed for Valentine's Day, Happy Valentine's Day. But we had 90% of landlords had representation, whereas less than 10% of our tenants did. Please, right to counsel.
Thank you.
And resign, De Leon.
Thank you.
Sergio Vargas, Lena Jones, Nancy Villanueva, Belen García, and Maria Osorio, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Good morning. I'm here to be, I guess, an advocate for people who have lost their housing because I have been in California since 1965 at 16 years old. And I got married very early in life, unfortunately, and I was able to see people getting, you know, evicted. A whole 24 building of people, one bedrooms, getting evicted. Their furniture was taken away, you know, and they had to go and pay the money to get their furniture back. I didn't know those implications then because I was young. But however, the only reason my husband and I didn't do it is because I, I took care of the money. Otherwise, we would have been out there too. But it's just been too long that I have been in California to see there's been no help for the victims here in any shape, form, or fashion. And that's what the changes I'd like to see is, is help the people out here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sergio Vargas, Nancy Villanueva, Belen García, Maria Osorio, and Alba Quiros, please.
Please.
Hola, buenos días. Mi nombre es Nancy Villanueva.
Hi, good morning. My name is Nancy Villanueva.
Y estoy organizando con ACE.
I'm organizing with ACE.
El día de hoy, como organizadora-
Today, as an organizer.
Una gran preocupación que tenemos-
We have a great concern.
Entonces, otra vez, no es un lujo, es una necesidad.
Again, it's not a luxury, it's a necessity.
El que todo inquilino tenga derecho a un abogado.
That every tenant have the right to an attorney.
La economía está muy dura. Nuestros inquilinos no pueden proveer un abogado, a personal.
The economy is very hard. Our tenants cannot hire a personal attorney.
Les pedimos, por favor, que apoyen la moción de la concejal, Nita Ramon.
We ask, please, for you to support the motion of Councilwoman Nita Ramon.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For now, I'm going to take three more speakers here, and then we're going to go to the phones, and we'll see how much time we have. Belen Garcia, Maria Osorio, Alba Quiros, Alonso Landeros, and Rebecca Acosta, please.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Belen Garcia.
My name is Belen Garcia.
Orgullosamente miembro de ACE-
Proudly a member of ACE.
-del Distrito Nueve.
From District Nine.
Les pido que nos tengan respeto a todos los comentaristas-
I'm asking for you to have respect.
-y que nos pongan atención en nuestros comentarios.
And for you to please pay attention to our comments.
Estamos exigiendo que nos pongan un abogado público-
We are demanded to get a public attorney.
Porque los desalojos son extremadamente masivos y se están mirando afectadas muchas familias.
Because the eviction are extremely massive, and a lot of families are being affected.
No nos podemos defender, solo necesitamos de un abogado, de alguien que esté verdaderamente preparado.
We cannot defend ourselves. We need an attorney, someone who's really prepared.
Entonces, si ponen un poquito de empeño y se ponen a trabajar un poquito, lograríamos mucho.
So if you really do it, and you start to work a little bit, we will get a lot.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es María Osorio, y yo soy miembro de ACE también.
My name is María Osorio.
Yo vivo en el Distrito Nueve.
Member of ACE, and I live in District Nine.
Yo estoy aquí como todas las personas que estamos aquí, que somos de la comunidad-
I'm here like all the persons-
-y dependemos-
I'm here like all the rest of the persons who are from the community, and we are defending-
Y dependemos a la familia de bajos ingresos.
The people of low income.
Y les quiero pedir, como dijo mi compañera, o exigir, que, por favor, pongan mucha atención y mucho empeño.
I'm asking you, like my friend said, to please pay attention.
A que los inquilinos tengan un abogado, la representación de un abogado.
For the tenants to have the representation from an attorney.
Porque sabemos de antemano que ningún inquilino va a poder pagar un abogado.
Because we know that none of the tenants are going to be able to pay for an attorney.
Y los dueños siempre van a ganarnos, ¿verdad? Porque ellos sí tienen dinero para poder pagar los abogados.
The owners are always going to win.
Que los defienden a ellos.
Because they have, they always have money to pay for attorney to defend them.
So, por favor, y si pueden hacer lo que sea permanente, ustedes se van a ahorrar mucho trabajo, mucho dinero.
So please, if you can do it, let it be permanent. You're going to save a lot of money and a lot of work.
Manteniendo las familias en su hogar.
By keeping families in their homes.
Y no contribuyendo a que haya más familias en la calle, más indigentes, y separando las familias.
And not contributing to more people being on the streets, more indigenous people on the streets.
Porque las familias ganan poco, y la mitad de su sueldo o más se va para pagar renta. Como han dicho, han subido las comidas, todo.
Because the families earn a little, and more than half of the income goes to the rent. And like we know, the food and everything else went up.
O decides pagar tu renta, o decides comer. So está muy difícil ahorita la vida, más con lo de la pandemia, y la pandemia no ha terminado.
And you either decide to pay your rent or pay food. It's very difficult right now with the pandemic. And the pandemic is not over yet.
Yo me enfermé el día primero de enero.
I became sick on January first.
Tengo las cuatro vacunas, y casi me muero.
Thank you.
Si no quede bien, entonces ustedes hagan-
Thank you, your time has expired. Alba Quiros, Alonso Landeros, thank you, your time has expired. No necesita más tiempo. Okay, Alba Quiros, Alonso Landeros, Rebecca Acosta, and Fred Sutton, please.
Good morning, I'm Rebecca Acosta. I'm here for right to counsel.
Okay.
I wanted just to know that we have a right, you know, our rights as a tenant. I just got custody of my son, and he goes to high school, and he can't sleep at night because they're banging on the walls. You know, I just want to make sure that we're able to live in peace. And, you know, just like you're living in peace, we want that too. You know? Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Bless you.
Thank you. Alba Quiros, Alonso Landeros, Susana Avila, and Fred Sutton, please.
Hello.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Alonso Landeros.
My name is Alonso Landeros.
Estamos pidiendo al derecho a un abogado.
We're asking for the right for an attorney.
¿Qué es lo que pasa en esta situación?
What happens during this situation?
Que, un ejemplo-
For example.
-en mi situación llega el dueño-
In my situation, the owner comes in.
Disculpe la palabra. I don't give a fuck. This is my house, I do whatever I want.
The owner comes and he says, "I don't give a fuck, it's my house, whatever I want."
Estando yo enfermo, no puedo respirar.
And I'm sick and I cannot breathe.
Síntomas del COVID.
COVID from, symptoms from COVID.
Teniendo el COVID, que no podía salir, estando yo con mi hijo en la casa.
I had COVID, I was not able to come out. I was with my son in the house.
Al hijo, y al dueño no le importó.
And the owner didn't care.
Llegó el hijo, que me iba a golpear con un bate.
The son came, he says he was going to beat me up with the bat.
Yo pienso que no es justo lo que está pasando en mi situación, como a muchas familias en todo el mundo, en Estados Unidos, o aquí en Los Angeles.
I don't think it's fair what's going on with my situation, like to other people too, around the world, and here in Los Angeles.
El día dos de este año, me golpeó el dueño.
Gracias.
No hay más tiempo. Gracias. Alba Quiros, Susana Avila, Fred Sutton.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Item 22 in general public comment.
You have a minute for each, please begin.
Fred Sutton with the California Apartment Association. Our members help house Los Angeles, and we appreciate everything you do. Item 22, ratio utility billing is very important to the city's greening and conservation efforts. As the city develops regulations around the use of this technology, we ask the department to work with housing providers and receive feedback as discussed and directed in committee in October. We do have concerns regarding possible housing provider liability for this third-party service. This should not be one of the enforcement mechanisms. We look forward to working with the city on these regulations and the committee. Thank you for that. General public comment, as it relates to funding for council being discussed in the audience today, there is a better and proven alternative. Available dollars should be used for a permanent rental subsidy program like we had at the height of the COVID pandemic. We should fund prevention, not lawyers. Direct rental assistance dollars would go further, prevent the need for representation, and is the most effective tool we have to achieve our shared goals of housing Los Angeles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alba Quiros, Susana Avila, and then I also want to take Richard Serano, who had signed up for multiple items, before we go to the phones. Okay.
Hi, can you remind us which items you signed up for?
Yeah, general public comment and also on the COP.
Okay, so, go ahead, the, is that in a separate?
COP, yeah, for the DOT program for citations.
You have a minute for each, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, City Council President Coria, City of Los Angeles. That citation situation is, citations are the second revenue that the city collects other than the taxes on the homes. So as soon as the city is in need of finding monies, inspectors, the city housing inspectors, everyone seems to run out with a ticket book, ready to give citations and give tickets to cars. That has to be considered on the other side of it. When they look for it, they're going to find it, even if it's not there, and the people have to fight that. So that shouldn't happen. And that's on the inside source, because I have been working for the city that long. But with that being said, to them needing attorneys to represent them in a courthouse setting to eviction, yeah, they can't afford the rent. How are they going to afford an attorney? So they should have a representation for their housing.
Please continue.
Again, we go back to the same thing that, just because the, on paper, things are changing, the situation hasn't changed. These people that are looking for housing, then the news, they just showed that they cleaned up an area without consent of, and it wasn't on the list, whose area was that in, and were they aware of it, and what did they do to reprimand the situation there of that cleanup? If they don't have an ID and they can't get into apartments, and you're taking away their livelihood there, or not livelihood, but where they live, it's something to be thought about. It should have been thought about before they gave a motel or hotel access to funding. If they, somebody's got to be conscious of who they are and where they are. We need to get that, somebody set up with an ID form for them to be able to do so. Has to be thought out before we implement and take whatever they have. They don't have much, but don't take what they have without giving them cover. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serano. All right, we've taken about an hour of public comment here in the chambers. I want to give the callers some opportunity to talk to-
Dr. Dumont.
Excuse me, sit down and be silent so we can continue with public comment. Have a seat and be silent. She's not following my instructions. Please remove her from the chambers for violating Council Rule 12 yet again.
You've been-
I'm sorry. We are taking public comment on the phone. Sit down and be silent.
You've been ordered to leave quietly, Mr. Mont.
All right, she's not following my instructions again. Please remove her from the chambers, and let's prepare the next caller to speak as soon as we have a chance when we're not being disrupted.
So, Dr. Dumont, you've been ordered to removed, please go. Please go, Dr. Dumont. So, to the public, Dr. Dumont is stalling us from doing our job and listening to people who have been patiently waiting on the phone for about an hour. And now there are two other people-
I'm sorry, everyone be silent in the council chambers, or you'll be removed. Please exit the council chambers silently, so we can resume our meeting, please.
Dr. Dumont, please leave.
Dr. Dumont is continuing to disrupt the meeting.
So, to the-
I'm sorry, be quiet. Be quiet, or you'll be removed too.
So that person's already been-
Okay, whoever is this person who's shouting, please remove her from the meeting pursuant to Council Rule 12.
She has been warned already. She was the person that was banging away and then shouting, "Why am I ordered?" She's been ordered to leave, and you've been ordered removed now.
Mr. Sax, be quiet. Remove Mr. Sax too, pursuant to Council Rule 12. Mr. Sax, you've been ordered to stop disrupting the meeting, and you're not complying with that order. You're ordered removed pursuant to Council Rule 12.
Okay.
All right, I think we can now resume with the callers. So let's go ahead and take our first caller for public comment. And again, to all those who are waiting on the phone, I apologize for the delay. Go right ahead.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
I'd like to speak on all available items. And general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes to speak on items one through nine, 15, and 22 through 30. We have a lot of people on the phone, so please stay on topic, and then after that, a minute for general. So please begin.
You stay on topic. Item number, politicians and diapers are two things that should be changed often, and for the same reason. The items, all items today on the agenda will be vote traded like all other days. That's why we have 60,000 homeless people. Number 23 to 26 are reap properties. Public reap encourages, is supposed to encourage rental property owners to return their properties to a safe and habitable condition. Before the pandemic, Dawson, Marquise Dawson, who's hiding in there, coward, and Herb Westen were stealing people's properties. If you really think these people care, public, if you really come here thinking these people care, these corrupt people, you're foolish. They don't. Number 27 is the legislative positions on cannabis for so-called social equity.
So-
Where's the, I'm talking on number 27, be quiet, child.
Please continue.
Supposed to be on social equity. Isn't 27 on the agenda? Quiet. Let it slide position on cannabis, child. Supposed to be for social equity. Where's the social equity when there's no representation in the black community? Forty percent of the incarcerated, there's no social equity. Item 1D in this motion, so-called enhanced law enforcement, they sneak that in public to put LAPD to work to encourage more, the incarceration of more black people. Read the agenda. Enhanced law enforcement, they say for people stealing water. What a joke. And they mention all, this is just to, more money for the LAPD, incarcerate more people. Community reinvestment grant is also in here, but it doesn't say to who. Whom this, who is this money supposed to go to? It's the black community that was devastated by these coons, Sambo, Uncle Toms, not representing us. They're 20% of the city council, we're almost 40% of the incarcerated, only 9% of the population. Who are these coons sitting there representing? Not the black community. Why doesn't the sleazy council sit down and be silent? Like little children, they get it up.
Speaker, I'm not sure what item you want to add.
Number 29, CD 3, pay attention, fobble, good grief. $239,000 for beautiful, community beautification. Why is it always, black communities underserved? Why isn't 20, 20, 39,000 going to anything but sleazy Marquise Dawson corrupt Destination Crenshaw gentrification project? Because that's just the way they want it. That's why. John Lee, number 30, his street banner program for support neighborhood councils. I didn't see any black children Friday.
In general, if you wish.
You're racist. Thank you. General comment, professional coon Heather Hutt on Channel 35 wants us to go to his so-called Black History exhibit. This is not black history. Glorifying criminal, and saying Herb Westen had to be thrown off the city council by the, by the, the law. Professional coon, current price, and head coon, Marquise Dawson, hiding in there, wants you to think black, black sports is black history. It's not. It's the black Natufians, the black Moors who civilized Spain, the black Egyptians who built the Great Pyramid, it's 2,300,000 blocks, 600 million tons. First eye surgery, first legal system, first agricultural system. That's black history, not this coon show. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And before we go to the next caller, I have an amending motion presented by Mr. Lee.
Go ahead, please.
Seconded by Ms. Rodriguez. As I understand it, Mr. Lee, you were drawing 22A and substituting in amending motion 22B. Is that correct? So let me read out 22B. So provides that the item be amended to adopt the following revised subsection slash recommendation D below. So this is a variation of what I had read before. So D, options for enforcement strategies to ensure compliance, including but not limited to an administrative enforcement program, a 60-day cure period similar to the provision of the tenant anti-harassment ordinance, a fine schedule, a private right of action for tenants against their landlords for overcharging and violations- for overcharging and violations of the ordinance, and mechanisms to address the use of contracted third-party billing agencies. Thank you very much, and we can go to the next caller now.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Happy Valentine's Day. I'd like to speak on item six and general public comment.
Please go ahead. You have a minute for each.
Hi, my name's Jamie York. I'm a member of the Rafita Neighborhood Council, but I'm speaking as an individual. I'm really disappointed that Gelt Uhan, who owns the Watermark, decided to decline doing a light district for Rafita. They were the sole vote, and they cast a no. It's really a terrible thing when a developer makes promises to a community and then doesn't hold up those promises. If it is possible for this item to be tabled, respectfully, I ask that it would be, because we need time to remind that developer of the promises that they made to our community, and frankly, it's unacceptable. This project went up with multiple variances. It's a 254-unit project, and they don't want to pay $3,700 a year for street lighting. It's just, it blows my mind how much they can promise a community and how little they can deliver. And, you know, we have the least of expectations, and yet even then, they're not met. Frankly, it's disgusting.
Go to general, too.
And I think the entire process of light districts needs to be looked at. So I'm calling also ahead of tomorrow's MLO vote, because I know that there's been significant pushback from nonprofits. But I've yet to see a compelling argument for why the interest of nonprofits outweigh the interest of the public in getting transparency. Neighborhood council members, we want the data. We want the ability to track who's lobbying on what issue. We want the ability to make informed decisions. The public deserves that. The only interest that neighborhood council members serve is the public's interest. And we have told you in a voice that is strong and united that a $2 million nonprofit exemption is far too high. Now, if you want to make the nonprofits not have to pay the lobbying registration fee, that's fine. I get that. I don't mind that. But what we want is the data. What we want is the ability to track information, and that is what is incredibly important in this, because we have already seen at the neighborhood council member level-
Thank you, Speaker. Next.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll take 10 more minutes of public comment on the phones. Let's go to the next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hi, good morning. I just have a couple, I guess, public comments, since they're not on the agenda. If you can hear me, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have a minute. Please go ahead.
Oh, awesome. So I am more, I'm 100% in favor to the right to counsel. While living in Kevin DeLeón's made-up, beautified hotels in downtown, there were several lawsuits that I could not afford a counsel to, and I was evicted because of that. Due to the fact that Kevin DeLeón, you don't stand up for the people, you should leave because you're useless and pointless at this point. And I would also like a motion on section 88.66, regulations of electric vehicle charging stations, that the signage needs to be changed. The signage right now, currently, you can only charge between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, and that is just ridiculous.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hi, it's Rob Kwan. I'd like to speak on items 30 and general public comment.
Absolutely. You say have a minute for each, Mr. Kwan. Please begin.
Items 30 is one of those nice street banner campaigns. We're trying to engage our neighborhood councils. And we saw a lot of that last week at the government reform committee's vote. We also saw two pages of amendments introduced after comment, but then the council president and city attorney said they don't believe that was a substantive amendment. We don't have to have comment on Wednesday. You're looking at a Brown Act complaint if you maintain that position. It's really insulting, especially on a government reform issue. So before we talk about engaging our neighborhood councils, maybe don't turn around and shut them out a week after they actually stood up for something. It's just really gross. My general public comment, I think it's also important to acknowledge that Councilmember Corian presided over a very different government reform meeting than we've seen under other council presidents. They've typically kind of rolled in there with their amendments, and there's been no discussion, and things just get rubber stamped. We saw extensive public comment, over 30 speakers, and we actually saw a robust discussion from the committee members, and that was nice to see. I think it's also important to note that Councilmember Corian highlighted some legal concerns, and he kind of delicately alluded to them. But I think it's really important when we look at who we're limiting and exempting with the municipal lobbying ordinance. The reality is, one person's lobbyist is another person's civil rights advocate. Ask yourself, do you think this Supreme Court is going to be okay with you picking and choosing which voices to elevate at City Hall? We know that they've soundly rejected that idea when it comes to core political speech. So I think that's just something that you should also ponder-
Thank you.
-as people ask for giant-
Thanks, Mr. Kwan.
Thank you, Mr. Kwan. Next speaker, please.
Caller, which items would you like to-
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Which items would you like to speak on?
All items and public comment, and I'll speak real quick because I know you're limiting the time to phone calls.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, item 15 and the COVID issues, I think we should remove them finally, and I think that we, all the people that were hurt by it, the restrictions, et cetera, should be reimbursed and that we move on. But I want those people who are the complainers about this issue, I want to let them know that I, I believe that the city council did the right thing. I think that the city council, this is the one thing that I think almost absolutely perfectly got it right. And as you all know out there, I'm not a kiss ass of this city. I fight them all the time. They deny me my public comment two-thirds of the time. But when they do something right, we have to say it was done right. So to all those city workers who fought through this with us, who stood by us and went through this and got the tests and got the shots, I thank you because you work for the greatest city, and this is the best place in the world to live. To those of you who complained about it and wrapped yourself in the Constitution and said you had the right, well, the rest of us have the right to live also. And I lost my wife in 2020 to COVID and dementia, and I wish a lot of you who say that this disease didn't exist, please go visit her at Forest Lawn, next to Elizabeth Taylor, and tell her she's really not dead. So again, I want to make sure that we make the employees who were hurt by this whole, but again, there was a lot of damage. This was the first time we've had to face anything like this, and I believe, and as much as I fight with the city council, I believe this was the best thing they've ever done. Public comment, Mr. Fobble, is that my-
Absolutely.
In regards to public comment, here we go again. Dodge Chrysler is doing their ads for more speed. Haven't we had enough people die? Haven't we had enough people run over? I mean, how many crashes do we have to have before this city council finally stands up as 15 members and the mayor and say, you know what? We've had it. We've had it. Our people are dying. People are being hurt. Lives are ruined. Property is damaged. And what's happening? Movies like Fast and Furious, they've made all their money. They're living in their big homes. But you know what? This is something that can affect all of us, because it's almost as bad as a person with a gun in the middle of the street. When you walk out of your house, you're taking your life into your own hands. Your children, your children can't even go to the mall because this is happening, and I hope the council does something about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, please, and this will be our last speaker.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hi, I'd like to speak on item number 15, and I'd like to also speak on general public comment, please.
Absolutely. You have a minute for each. Please go ahead.
Thank you so much. It's about time that we get rid of the COVID-19 testing and mandates, because we've already seen enough already. And it is time for the public to move on from the COVID-19 era, because that has already been done and over. Now, we already seen the difference. Now we've seen that people were being duped into getting the COVID-19 vaccine. Well, turns out now those people finally understood that they were being duped. And what's interesting right now is that we're seeing a lot of people who got the COVID-19 vaccine are starting to experience health problems, heart problems, all sorts of health problems after getting the stupid COVID-19 vaccine. I'd like to move on to general public comment now.
Absolutely. Please go ahead.
And Mr. Corian, what kind of Valentine's Day is that? To tell, to say that we're only going to take 10 more minutes of public comment. There are members of your audience as well who didn't get a chance to speak. You're limiting people's public comment. What kind of example is that? That clearly does show that you're violating the Brown Act, Mr. Corian. And do you understand that you, in fact, are bulldozing all the other speakers that want to speak so that you can rush and get your agendas passed? Do you call that? Is that acceptable, Mr. Corian? That's totally unacceptable. You're clearly violating the Brown Act, and you should be ashamed of yourself. This is the kind of Valentine's Day love Los Angeles gets folks, is we're being silent, and in the city council, Corian does not want us to hear what we have to say. He wants to limit public comment to ten minutes. That's unacceptable.
Thanks very much, Speaker. Just for, and that'll close public comment. Just for the record, we've taken an hour and a half of public comment, so I don't think there was any limitation on people's ability to be heard today. So that will now close public comment on all agenda items. It will close general public comment as well. Madam Clerk, what items are available now for us to vote on?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items one through eight as well as 23 through 30, sir.
Very good. Those items are now before us. If there's no members wishing to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabuate the votes.
13 ayes.
All right, we can now move on to items that members have called special. Madam Clerk, what's the first order, what's the next order of business?
Council may vote on items nine and 15 as amended, sir.
Okay, there's items-
I'm sorry, just nine and 15 as amended unless anyone, no? Okay, nine and 15, sir.
Items nine and 15 as amended are now before us. So members, oh, Mr. Lee.
This is an issue obviously we've been dealing with for quite some time now. I believe that the city attorneys here, if we can move this item, I think it's important that we discuss moving forward in closed session.
Very good. Without objection, we will do so shortly. We'll conclude a few more items of business, and then we'll go ahead and take that item up in closed session. So let's go ahead and take up item number 15 then, as amended. If there's no one wishing to be heard on that matter, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabuate the votes.
13 ayes.
Okay, next order of business?
Mr. President, would council like to vote on item 22? There is an amendment on 22, and that is amendment 22B, and that has been circulated, sir?
Yes, so that amendment, members, was read into the record, and just for clarity, 22A was withdrawn, and 22B is the amendment that's now before us along with the underlying items. So if there's no one wishing to be heard on that matter, oh, yes, Councilmember Rahman.
Wanted to just speak to this item for one moment, given that there was an amendment added to it. I wanted to provide a little bit of context for how this amendment, for how this motion came about. Actually, we have one of the people who brought this issue to our attention, Bob Shore, from Park La Brea Residence Association. In the audience, a lawyer and a guide on a lot of things related to tenants' issues when I had Park La Brea in my district. He had brought this issue to us and talked to us about the fact that a lot of landlords opt to bill tenants directly for utilities as opposed to adding a percentage point to their rent. But a lot of large buildings, including Park La Brea, don't have individual meters for each unit. They have a single meter for a building or for a section of a building, and they calculate bills for individual units that are estimates, and they're often based on a formula that uses things like square footage, number of occupants, and other characteristics to calculate the costs for each unit. This amendment, which I'm comfortable with, looks at the question of the use of third-party billing agencies for collecting these utilities, which a lot of large buildings also do. And the thing is that third-party billing agencies further reduce transparency around billing for tenants. And so I'm really comfortable with this amendment, which asks the department to ensure that we're looking at ensuring compliance from third-party billing providers. And I admit that the original language may have been a little bit too prescriptive in saying exactly how we should be looking at compliance. But I think holding landlords accountable or responsible for what their third-party billing providers are doing is something that I do think the departments should consider as part of this report back. But I leave it to them and their expertise to let us know how we can get to the best goal, which is a shared goal, which is around transparency for tenants, as they're seeing their utility bills, as we know, are spiking these days. And I think a lot of people have questions that they want clearer answers to, and I'm hoping that we can support them in getting that. Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Lee, for, you know, for chatting about what your goal was in doing this and making some adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Councilmember Corian, President Corian, and thank you, Councilmember Rahman. It was a week ago that I stood before you asking for a more balanced approach and looking at how we look at the relationship between renters and landlords in the city. And item 22 on today's agenda, a request for a report back with recommendations on a potential ordinance that will require greater transparency for tenant utility bills, as Councilmember Rahman just explained, is a step in that direction. The report will include requirements for landlords and third-party billing agencies to provide a detailed written disclosure of this methodology. I did introduce an amendment that would strike the language that landlords were responsible for third-party actions. I understand also Councilmember Rahman's concerns over removing this section. So we instead, as she said, introduced a separate amendment, 22B, that deals with both of our concerns. Therefore, colleagues, I'm asking for your aye vote today on Councilmember Rahman's motion and to accept amendment 22B that achieves both of our goals. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, members, for working through that issue. For the sake of clarity, I'd like to ask that we go ahead and take two votes, one on the amendment and then one on the matter as amended. So first, let's open the roll on the amendment, please. Close the roll and tabuate the votes.
13 ayes.
All right, now the underlying matter, 22 as amended. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabuate the votes.
13 ayes.
Very good. Thank you very much. That will bring us next to item number nine. And I think before we have any discussion in open session, why don't we go ahead and prepare the room for closed session for discussion of item number nine with our council. So sergeants, if you could please go ahead and prepare the chambers.
This operation resulted in the arrest of 116 individuals by LAPD investigators alone and a total of 368 arrested by all the involved agencies. For many, many years, the San Fernando Valley was, if you'll excuse the expression, left at the station. Now we see lots of progress being made on major investments, including the East San Fernando Valley Light Rail Line. And today, it is my pleasure to join with Dorsey High School, its leaders as well as its students, for an opportunity to hear each other, to see each other, and to have a good conversation about the promise of the future.
This is the last of six votes that we've taken on a package of renter protections that I think will be transformative for Los Angeles moving forward.
The city of Los Angeles continues their celebration of African-American Heritage Month with a special live event featuring renowned activist artist Betty Sarr at the Pico House in El Pueblo. The evening will include a screening of a new documentary on Sarr, Ready to Be a Warrior, and a Q and A with the artist afterward. Still creating well into her 90s, Sarr is known for her contributions to the Black Arts Movement in the 1970s, taking on myths and stereotypes about race and femininity. Her work challenges ideas of African-Americans with artwork that confronts American racism. See Betty Sarr, Ready to Be a Warrior, at the historic Pico House, February 16th at 6:00 PM. Admission is free, however, an RSVP is required. Call 323-871-5801 to reserve your seat or log on to laevent RSVP.com. The Northridge Branch Library invites kids to write your own little Golden Biography book. Join Bite-Size Histories as author Cherie L. Smith gives you her tips for writing nonfiction for young readers. Smith is an award-winning author of titles like What is the Civil Rights Movement and Who Were the Tuskegee Airmen? She'll help you turn your own tales into a little Golden Book-style bite-sized history of your own. Come with a tale-to-tale and a willingness to write, draw, and have some fun learning. Bite-Size Histories with Cherie L. Smith happens at the Northridge Branch Library Saturday, February 18th at 1:00 PM. For details, visit lapl.org/events. Don't miss the Sixth Annual Black History Month Festival at the newly renovated Michelle and Barack Obama Sports Complex. Open Arms Food Pantry and Resource Center is proud to host this year's event, which will focus on health and wellness. Guest speakers will talk in depth on topics that affect the mind and body within the African-American community. All in attendance will find plenty of resources available to improve individual lifestyle with a special focus on increasing literature in the community. And of course, there'll be plenty of shopping, food, and entertainment. The Sixth Annual L.A. Black History Month Festival happens from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday, February 19th. For more information, log on to culturela.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do. The L.A. County Metropolitan Transportation Authority welcomed Los Angeles Mayor Karen Bass as its newest board member. The 13-member Metro Board sets policy and operates transit services and programs throughout L.A. County's 88 cities and 16 municipal transit operators. Mayor Bass has prioritized a unified approach to addressing L.A.'s homeless crisis, declaring a state of emergency on her first day in office. Her appointment is expected to be pivotal in helping Metro further initiatives connecting homeless individuals on bus and trains to supportive services. For more information about the Metro Board of Directors, visit metro.net. Local nonprofit organization Ciclovia has announced their 2023 event schedule, where L.A. streets are closed to traffic and become public parks. Starting February 26th with a five-mile stretch of Sherman Way in the Valley, these eight free, family-friendly events run through December 3rd. Other locations include Mid-City Pico Union, South L.A., Vermont Avenue and Lamont Park, Koreatown, Hollywood, North Hollywood, and Heart of L.A. This year also includes two new events known as Ciclamini, a compact one-to-two-mile neighborhood route that is more pedestrian-oriented. Over 1.8 million people have experienced Ciclovia since their founding in 2010, becoming the biggest open-streets event in the United States. To view the full calendar, check out ciclovia.org. The Los Angeles Police Department held a press conference to release the results from a statewide operation focused on human trafficking. Operation Reclaim and Rebuild was held January 22nd to 28th, 2023, to find potential victims, arrest their exploiters, and investigate prostitution-related crimes. The operation is in partnership with L.A. County Sheriff's Department, Regional Human Trafficking Task Force, and 82 fellow law enforcement agencies.
This operation resulted in the arrest of 116 individuals by LAPD investigators alone and a total of 368 arrested by all the involved agencies.
The collaborative efforts of law enforcement, social services, and victim advocacy groups helped recover 131 victims of sexual exploitation. If you have any information on crimes related to human trafficking, call Crime Stoppers at 800-222-TIPS or log on to lacrimestoppers.org. to human trafficking, call Crime Stoppers at 800-222-TIPS, or log onto lacrimestoppers.org.
Not it, not it. Again? Again. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
...in the public health, and the city of L.A.'s Department of Aging reminds you that getting vaccinated and boosted is the best way to protect yourself and your community.
And it's especially important for those at higher risk of severe diseases, such as older adults and individuals who are immunocompromised or have chronic conditions.
For COVID-19 vaccination appointments, or to request in-home vaccination if you or a loved one have difficulty leaving the home, please call 211 or the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Vaccine Call Center at 833-540-0473. Open daily, 8:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Remember, vaccines are free, and immigration status and insurance are not required.
Visit vaccinatelacounty.com for more information about how to get vaccinated.
And visit aging.lacity.org, or call 213-482-7252 for information on senior services.
You may have noticed that at some intersections, the walk sign at the crosswalk starts a little earlier than the green light for people driving. This is called a leading pedestrian interval. It's a transportation term that means those of us using the sidewalk get a three-to-seven-second head start over cars. Giving pedestrians just a few seconds to fully enter the crosswalk makes it much more likely that drivers who are making turns will see them. This very simple timing change can have a big impact on street safety. Leading pedestrian intervals reduce crashes between people driving and people walking by as much as 60%. Moving L.A. Forward.
And there is nothing to report out of closed session, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. With that, then, item number nine is now before us. And was there an amendment to item number nine? Oh, Councilmember Lee, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Department of Transportation and the Police Department of the LAPD, in consultation with the city attorney and the CAO, report back to council with options for developing a standard procedure for obtaining a warrant in order to remove scofflaw vehicles from city streets, including any funding, staffing needs, and any necessary policy considerations needed.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded without objection. That amendment will be accepted. Any other comments on item number nine, members? If not, I think we can proceed to the vote on the item as amended. So let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Very good. Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, what is the next item on the agenda?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting a referral.
Without objection posted and referred?
The desk is clear, sir.
Great. Members, any announcements? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to wish you all a happy Valentine's Day. You know, don't hate. But I also wanted to take a moment, but I know, honestly, just want to wish you all the very best of uplifting love and celebrating love in the city of Los Angeles. But I wanted to take a moment, there's a friend whose mom is celebrating a very special birthday today, her 70th birthday. And, you know, we know how special it is to be able to celebrate our loved ones, and I wanted to take a moment to say happy 70th birthday to Elda Amelia Castillo. She's an incredible woman, grew up on the East Side, and has long roots of giving back to the community and the city of Los Angeles. And I just wanted to take a moment to say happy birthday, Elda. You are loved, not just by your family, but by many of us who have the privilege of knowing you and want to wish you the best of health and happiness, and that you have a wonderful, wonderful birthday today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, members? Announcements on my right, announcements on my left. Seeing none, we can go now to motions to adjourn. Do we have any motions for adjournment on the right? Any motions for adjournment on the left? Very good. Seeing none, happy Valentine's Day, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.